And this company, I think the mayor said they were a foreigner company, the Canadian, is that what it is?
So we know, we know there are sites in Toronto, there are offices that are in Canada, so we know that, we know that there were data there, they also have servers in Serbia and other companies.
Wow.
But as far as knowing for sure where the data from Maricopa County went and resides, we don't know that, but they've got backup servers.
So, an audit, because we talked about that a little earlier, first off, would that find where the, where the server is and where the information would be?
Tracing, tracing the flow of the information, yes sir.
The audit would do that?
Correct.
And, but it'd also tell us whether or not it's true or not that the one point nine million signatures were or were not verified, right? So we would have an absolute knowledge of that.
Colonel, could you get a little bit closer to the microphone? I'm getting, a lot of people are saying, "I can't hear the guy talk."
Okay. So the, the adjudication of the signatures on the ballots, that would be totally separate, wouldn't be necessarily a digital forensic process, but that audit would be, you know, have to be conducted at the county level on all those, on all the envelopes.
So if we did an audit, if we were able to do that, tell me the things that could come out of that.
Well, if the signatures on the envelopes were invalid, you could necessarily get a percentage of the votes that would be disqualified. But again, when, when the ballots are separated from the envelopes, you know, you can't tell which ballot came from which envelope. So really, all that would tell you is a percentage of that, the percentage of those mail-in or absentee ballots that were not legitimate.
So what would the, what could the server tell us?
The server would basically tell you all of the electronics, so once the ballots are processed, the batches and the, the images, that'll, that'll tell you where all those goes, and, and it'll also tell you any changes to the software, any updates, algorithms that were in place, and that's all present at the, at the code level, and that's really what these companies have balked at, providing access to the code, because they say that that's their intellectual property, and it's, they've been successful at preventing folks from analyzing the code.
So they're, they're utilizing their, their system for our elections, but it's their property.
And, and counties and states have signed up for that.
Thank you.
Senator Brilling, final question.
Yes, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Colonel, just for clarity, not only can these machines be manipulated with a thumb drive and everything else, it can be changed remotely outside the voting center.
That's, that's correct, there are references in the user's manual that show how they can do that.
Thank you. Changed remotely, outside the voting center.
That's, that's correct, there are references in the user's manual that show how they can do that.
Thank you.
Witnesses?
Yes, I think we should call Anna Horth.
Okay.
Because she has an appointment, and we'll call her first.
Okay, and then after that, Senator Pat Kolbeck, we need to make sure that we have him at the airport by one o'clock. All right, thank you very much. Anna Horth?
Is Anna Horth here?
Anna Horth?
A-N-H-O-R-T-H.
Anna Horth.
All right, we'll check on her, and let's go into...
All right, Senator Pat Kolbeck. Just so folks know, that we've got folks in a separate room, just so that we can bring them out and have some kind of border here. Senator Kolbeck. Thank you, sir, if you would, could you please introduce yourself?
Yes, my name's Michigan, former Michigan State Senator Patrick Kolbeck, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you, Mr. Chair, and esteemed panel members. For eight years, I was sitting on the other side of this testimony, I was where you were sitting, and hopefully I'll be able to provide kind of a unique perspective on what to look out for in this election. If you'll excuse me, I'm gonna try to get my presentation up here and get that going, kick it up.
Yeah, technology's great until you want to use it.
It's more difficult when you can't see. Nice job on the resolution of the screen here, by the way. And just for background purposes, as we're looking forward to recognize my USB flash drive. There we go. Much better. Et voila.
Okay.
Oh, we still don't have it on the screen yet. Ah, there we go.
All right.
And if you, if you would, please put it in play mode so we can see it. All right, please proceed.
All right, thank you very much. It was a perfect compliment, I think, to Colonel Waldron's testimony here, because I kind of got a unique experience regarding this whole election process. First of all, I am a former Michigan State Senator, I served on the Senate, Michigan Senate Elections and Government Reform Committee. I took those duties very seriously, to the point of diagramming out all of our election processes, so I have a pretty good understanding of how elections were supposed to work from a book perspective. But another perspective that's useful to this discussion is that something that I couldn't do while I was running for office, it's actually, I served as a poll challenger in Detroit at the AV counting board for the election day, from five PM through the next day into the evening of the following day on November fourth. So I was actually at the Detroit AV counting board, so you may have heard about all the things that happened there, all the cardboard up on the windows. Yes, I was there, I was one of the people blocked from returning back into the Detroit AV counting board, so I could resume my duties as poll challenger, I was up training our next batch of poll challengers as to what they need to look out for and what we had been seeing. And coincidentally, by the way, that was when they were counting the military ballots, which, just so you guys know, that's when they duplicate the ballots, because the military ballots come in in a format that's different from those that can be read by these tabulators. And if you don't have a Republican and a Democrat watching that, it's ripe for malfeasance, if you will, and that's exactly what happened. So, along with that background, I'm actually a certified Microsoft Small Business Specialist. In addition to being that, I actually did cable and design the International Space Station, so I, I have no problem working with technology, so it's kind of a unique background, and, and just so happened that I was right there on the Detroit AV counting board on the night of the election. So, I'm gonna focus in on just, highlight three areas of the diagram that Colonel Waldron just showed you, because that's important for everybody to understand, for people on the ground, these are the key pieces of technology. He talked about Imagecast Central, that's the equipment that I witnessed. If you're at an in-person polling location, you'll have the Imagecast precinct set up, and that's on the right-hand side of this diagram. Up on the top is kind of the local data center and the, kind of the eye in the sky, the overarching look at what's going on with the election. And we'll get into that a little bit more detail later. And as you guys know, Dominion Voting Systems was used here in Arizona, in Maricopa County, and they were using some of the same equipment we were just talking about in regards to Imagecast precinct, and also Imagecast Central, that can, the scanner there. So, I said that I was in your position before, right? So if I were in your position, these are kind of some of the key questions I would be asking in regards to all that we're hearing about this testimony regarding this election. Number one, was the chain of custody for the election artifacts broken? And thank you very much, Senator Allect Townsend, for bringing that up. That is a key term for everybody to understand, chain of custody. And we're gonna go over a little diagram on specifically where some of my comments are gonna focus in on in that chain of custody. All right, and the key is to hit the right arrow, all right? And was there evidence of election fraud? There can be fraud that happens that may not even violate statute, but you know that the intent is there to defraud the election, and they take advantage of loopholes that we have in the law. For example, in Detroit, we know that there was an ability for people to vote both at the poll and absentee. So some people's votes were more important than others. Was there evidence that election statutes were violated? Yeah. And Michigan, we have evidence to suggest that's exactly what happened. Was there evidence of foreign agents with the ability to manipulate the election data, and third parties getting access to that data? We believe that, we've seen evidence of that as well. But the other thing need to ask is, well, all right, what are we gonna do about it if we see all this happening? And what options do you have as legislators? All right, so let's go to this chain of custody, and I, I could go into a lot more detail on this chain of custody, and I'll, but I like to simplify it in just four key artifacts. Qualified voter file, i.e. who's registered to go off and vote in your state. Number two, poll book, that's a precinct-specific extract of the data from your qualified voter file. The ballot itself, pretty important artifact, right? But then, in the spirit of the old Stalin quote, it's not he who votes that counts, it's the one who counts the vote that counts. You gotta look at the ballot tabulator and how the votes are tallied. And that was my focus when I went to the Detroit AV counting board. I was one of those folks that was not specifically assigned to any particular counting station. I was looking at the big picture, and we'll go over what I found here in a sec. First of all, everybody hopefully has seen the idea that there's been a lot of voter anomalies. This is our first clue that something's happened. When you're on the ground, you can see all the things that are happening, you know, onesie-twosie style, and say, "Hey, wait a minute, that, that, that envelope was backdated," or you can see that they adjudicated something in favor of the Democrats or the Republicans, or something like that. That's easy to go off and see, but it's very difficult to see the big picture. That comes out afterwards with experts like Colonel Waldron. And in this case, we first started seeing issues when people were talking about Benford's Law being violated. That's actually used in criminal court cases to determine whether or not fraud existed. So that was the first indicator, that some of the analyses we've seen flagged that. That's not proof, I mean, it's getting the, it's telling you that it's, you've got something off here that you gotta investigate. Then, we've seen linear regression analyses, that there's a lot of noise in, but it seemed to indicate a pattern of vote distribution that indicated some data manipulation. Then, most recently, we have actually seen folks who believe that they've identified specifically what the algorithm that was used to switch some of the data. So, some other things that were kind of odd, and you don't see while you're necessarily on the ground, but in retrospect, you'll be able to get access to it. This is actually documented as part of the affidavit that was submitted in a lawsuit that's put in Michigan by Sidney Powell and in other states. And you guys have voted quite a bit, you guys are, most of you have already served in office, right? Do you remember any of your votes being tabulated with a decimal point in the back of them? I, I don't remember any, my eight years serving in the Michigan Senate, anything, any times where I actually had a decimal point after a vote tally.
So that would suggest that a partial person was voting?
Well, sometimes, you know, there are people that tried to make you feel like a partial person when you served, but no, that wasn't the case here. And so, you guys have probably all heard about what I call the little switch, the Antrim County. You've heard testimony on that already today, and some of the things that could possibly happen. Getting into the possible technical reasons for that is, maybe you have an internal ballot barcode switch on it, where they have one barcode style or ballot style that's flagged, and then when they associate a specific scan of a vote, they flip it over to a different barcode style that may have the voters or the candidates flipped in it. Something else is something called the rank, ranked choice voting algorithm, it's one of the modules inside of the Dominion suite. And this is where you might see evidence of, this is the only place that I know that at least I can start putting in fractions into your vote, because if you meet a certain vote threshold, it'll go off and switch that, it'll, it'll prioritize the votes for the second choice, if you will, and give them ten percent of the first choice, of whoever, of the, ten percent of whatever number you specify. It'll actually get into the point of allocating percentages of votes to one of the candidates. Another thing is data manipulation via remote access, and another thing to look at, as you guys investigate what happened here or didn't happen inside Arizona, is take a look at your public accuracy test. And there are people that, this is usually in Michigan at least, it's specified what the standards are for that by the Secretary of State. And if you don't run all the possible permutations of, of votes that might happen on a given ballot, you may leave gaps that can be exploited. And I would submit, we're gonna show one of the examples of where we believe, one of those gaps is that you could maybe flip a vote from a certain candidate to a write-in candidate, and preload this with write-in candidates, and we think we have evidence of that happening in Detroit. So, if you want to go off and check into this, one of the things you're gonna need to do, so, yep, is look into compact flashcards, event logs, and paper vote tallies. So these tabulator data cards, that's where the compact, that's where a lot of the election data we want to look at is gonna be located, so please make sure you get your hands on that. Then we talk about the big switch, I might not get any detail on this. Suffice it to say, in Michigan, you know, our current vote deficit for President Trump is being projected as one hundred fifty-four thousand, one hundred eighty-eight votes. We got more than that that we can tie back to potential fraud. So, in the state of Michigan, I know a lot of people have written us off in this context, but I tell you, Michigan's in play because of what the level of fraud we've seen. So here's what our Detroit AV counting board looked like. And essentially, it was set up, so there's five hundred and three precincts in the city of Detroit. They put in a hundred and thirty-four of these Imagecast Central stations all the way around, that's where the poll books were located. And there are about two to five precincts per Imagecast Central unit. We had five poll workers per station. Overall, I would submit, there was probably less than ten Republican workers the whole night sitting at those, and by law, we're supposed to have a Republican and Democrat adjudicating ballots. Here's what, I said that I was looking at the big picture when I got in there, I was looking at the big picture. First question I asked was, one of these chief election officials, his name was Chris Thomas, I said, who I worked with when I was serving in the Senate, I said, "What, how are you going to protect the chain of custody around the tallies of the individual tabulators and, and your report outs to the county on all points beyond that?" So we talked, we talked about the idea of this getting reported out to New York Times, you can see it on CNN and all that kind of stuff. "Show me how that chain of custody is protected." And this election official, who was state elections director in Michigan for two decades, said, "I don't know." Now, this is kind of an important data point, don't you think? So, and I was badgering him the rest of the night, and I said, "You know what?" He finally acquiesced and said, "Tell you what, I'll, I'll let you know." And then, finally, the last statement he had on it, because I was pretty persistent, was saying, "You know what, I'm not gonna tell you till after tomorrow." And I go, "Well, you know what the primary duty of a poll challenger is? To make sure that the election process are executed effectively, efficiently, and accurately in transparent manner." He did not allow that to be done. Now, I can see physical transfer of data, I can watch when somebody moves a flash drive from a tabulator to a central station, and I can go off and verify vote counts at that handoff. I can't get inside wires to go off and trace electrons through the ethernet cables that I saw positioned, and that's the next point I want to highlight. And this is something important for you to understand here, is how these were connected. A lot of these election officials will swear up and down that none of these machines were connected to the internet. And that's based on propaganda being pushed by companies like Dominion Voting Systems. They will say that they have an air gap, they will say that they have firewalls in place, they have encryption in place. And I hope to demonstrate here that that doesn't mean a heck of a lot. And any hacker worth their salt knows that if one computer's connected to the internet, they're all connected to the internet, firewall or not. And so here's a diagram that I put together based on, and I, this is literally midnight the next night, before I forgot everything, I wanted to make sure I documented everything that was there. I went through and physically traced all the cables from all the tabulators and adjudicators to the local data center at the, at the top. So it's that local data center that, we have election officials that did confirm that that was connected to the internet, but they said none of the tabulators or anything else were connected to the internet. I can show physical connection between those tabulator, tabulator machines, the ethernet cables, two routers, or managed switches, it's tough to tell from twelve feet away. But they're, it's a router type of device, connected to all the other devices on this network. And as Colonel Waldron pointed out, it's designed to work as a network. And so all these tabulators were connected to one another, all the adjudicators were connected to one another, the local data center that they acknowledged was connected to the internet were connected to these tabulators and adjudicators. So, and so if that wasn't enough, we went around to all the different computers, and observed in the bottom right-hand corner of all the computers, I can't do this because it defaults into a certain slide presentation mode, but if you have laptops that are window-enabled and you're connected to the internet, you roll over that, and you got a Windows ten device, roll your mouse cursor over in that bottom right-hand corner, and you'll see a LAN internet connection icon. And you roll over it, it's gonna pop up and say, "Connected to the internet." They wouldn't do that test for me to go off and demonstrate that, yeah? So, guys, it's serious stuff, and I also wanted to highlight, I took a snapshot of what the Wi-Fi connections were at that point in time. And one of them's called AV underscore connect, I wonder what that was connecting? Part of their spec that they have in the contract with the state of Michigan, that is supposed to be connected via ethernet cables, and they even have cellular-based modems that they can plug into a lot of these items to transfer the data over the internet. They've got a Dominion Tech Support Manual that says, "Connected to the ethernet." There's no denying that this was network-connected. And by the way, even if they say it wasn't connected to the internet, in the Detroit AV counting board, I can trace a physical connection that says that the system that was used to tabulate one hundred and seventy-two thousand plus votes in the state of Michigan was all networked together. So even if it wasn't some guy sitting in an lace shanty in Antarctica connected to the internet, that one guy in the city of Detroit that had access to all that information could modify the votes locally there. And so, why does it matter? Well, we already talked about these man-in-the-middle attacks, we talked about, there, in the Sidney Powell lawsuit that's out there, there's additional exhibits that highlight that these passwords are available on the internet. And when you have a man-in-the-middle attack, you think you're getting the right data, you think you're talking to the right person, but you ain't. You're talking to an in-between guy. We also got NAIST that left a key under the map, what do I mean by that? All the specs on what files to look for, what their file size is, everything else for the voting system is left up on the internet for everybody to go off and, I went there myself, I could download this file, took that extract from it. You can find out everything you need to go off and manipulate as a hacker. And we've got challenger observations on the ground that attest to each and every one of these, and I just want to highlight one of them, the poll worker observation, that we actually, he actually observed the fact that the printout of the tape said that there were write-in candidates on it, yet when you actually, he will attest in his affidavit that there were no write-in ballots submitted.
Senator Kolbeck, we're out of time.
Yep.
So, thank you very much for your testimony. We also appreciate the slide deck that you presented, and if you are willing, would you please distribute it that to the members of this panel? And I'm sure Mayor Giuliani would like to have it as well.
I will leave the camera for everybody.
Any questions for this gentleman, Mayor? Or would you like to move on to Anna Horth?
We can move on to her.
All right. Thank you very much, Senator. Anna Horth, would you please come up to the witness stand? I guess it's a table, not a stand, I was just corrected. The witness sit. Thank you for coming, Anna.
Thank you for having me.
Would you please give your name, and Mayor, the floor is yours.
My name is Anna, and I'm a resident and registered voter in Pima County. I volunteered as a poll observer.
Can you get a little bit closer to the microphone, please?
Sure, of course.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Anna, and I'm a resident and registered voter in Pima County. I volunteered as a poll observer on October sixteenth, and then I signed up to work as a poll worker on November third in a neighboring precinct. Would you like me to just give you an overview?
Yes, please do.
Is that the question? Okay. Well, I, I wrote in because I was aware of some irregularities that happened while I was a poll observer, and some different activity that I just felt uncomfortable with on election day. So I'll go ahead and start with what happened on the day that I was an observer. I was certified prior to that to be able to watch the two people that would be correcting the, the problematic ballots, which I guess are called, they were duplicates. When I walked into the room, they said, "I'm sorry, you're not, you can't be in here, you're gonna go into the, another room." So I had to walk back to the front desk, I was escorted from, from that area back to the, to the one area where the ballots were being separated from their envelope. And I, I was, there were thirty to thirty-two people doing this, and there were probably fourteen to seventeen tables that were, they are sat two people, and it was supposed to be a Democrat and a Republican. But not every table had a Democrat, but not every table had a Republican. So many of those tables had either a Libertarian, or someone, it was one table with someone from the Green Party, and then there were three or four tables that had a Pima County worker at the, at each of those tables. And they worked there at the elections office, because when people came in from the building, they talked to them, and their conversations led, led me to believe things like, "Oh, did you leave your lunch? Did you bring lunch?" And they said, "No, it's over at, in my office, I'll, I'm gonna go get it later." And she was back in five minutes. So, similar situation conversations that went on with people who came in with those, with those workers. I found it difficult for me to be able to oversee thirty-two people and what they were doing. I was able to catch a few of the things that were mistakes, or where ballots were just, they were taking them out of the envelopes and putting them on, in a pile. And their job in this particular bill, room was to watch, to make sure that the ballots were in one direction, and then they would double-check the count of the ballot to the envelope, to, to, I imagine, to check it against the envelopes that came in. Each table was given a bin to put these in, and these bins would then go to another area where they were being stacked up to be tabulated starting on October twenty-second. Many of these had mistakes, or they were written in pencil. And the workers, as I went around, had questions on, you know, "Is this a good ballot, is this not?" I was told by the gentleman that ushered me out of the place where I was supposed to be, and said, "You aren't supposed to talk to anyone, you do not communicate with them. If you have an issue, or you see an issue, you need to go to the supervisor, which is at the front of the table, up front of the room." So, as I saw things, as I went around to each table, I would go to the supervisor, and I let her know, you know, "They, they don't know what to do with this, this ballot, is it pencil, or blah, blah, blah." And she'd say, "No, it's fine, it's fine." So, as I went back to the tables where I saw these issues, under my breath, I said, "You need to go tell her, you need to go talk to them about this." And so, many of them said, "What do I do with this ballot? It's in pencil." "Oh, it's fine, it'll go through." Or it was, some people wrote over their ballot, over the little oval circle where they were supposed to mark, and those were put into a pile, a separate pile, it would be called duplicates. Those duplicates then went to another table, and were then taken to the room where I had been ushered out of. And there was one person, there was supposed to be a second person, and I said, "Is there a Republican at that table?" Because I said, "Is there a Democrat and a Republican?" And he said, "Well, we hope so, they have to, if they get here, but it'll just be, you know, just be me, and hopefully a second person." So, as I saw these ballots along this area that was, that they marked as dupe, which I understood to stand for duplicates that were going to be fixed. They would then be taken to the table, to the room, where I could see a glass, it was a glassed wall between us, and they were taken around to the other side to be dealt with. I didn't get to see that at that point. So when I left, and the other person took over for me at one o'clock, I was there for five hours. Uh, so when I left and the other person took over for me at 1:00, I was there for five hours. Uh, I shared with her, I said, "There's a lot of mistakes that are happening. They're just, they're not putting them in, in the order that they need to be in. So when they get folded, they become a duplicate because they can't be counted. They're, the machine wasn't going to accept them. So it had to be then taken out of the pile and put into a duplicate." So when I left, the man who had ushered me out of the room, the first room, uh, had, came to get me at 1:00 and walked me straight over to the front desk. And he said, "I hope everything went well." And I said, "Well, my concern is not necessarily where I was. It was hard for me to watch thirty-two people by myself. But m- more concerning is when these ballots were opened in the other room." And so to give you, uh, kind of a sense of how it worked is, the ballots, however they were collected, were brought into an initial area of the, uh, office of the elections in Pima County. And that room, they were then, the envelopes were then opened up and the signatures were checked. So then they would go through a double door where they were then sent to the room that I was in where there were, as many people as I explained before, trying to put them in an order, not necessarily of where they were from, but how they came in. So, just, let's just say there were maybe two hundred, two hundred and fifty per box, I, I'm not sure. But they, they came from different zip codes, different areas. It was whatever was mailed in. And then those were then put aside to be counted after the 22nd. It was, my concern was the amount of ballots that were considered to be problematic, that were then leaving the area that I was in, going to a room where there were only supposed to be two people and yet not even sure there was two people. So, that was my experience as an, as an observer that I shared. I thought that was concerning. Uh, the other thing is when I came back to drop off my ballot, uh, I had to drop it off outside. And there was no longer a police officer. And we found out that it was because our mayor, uh, or not my, I live in Oro Valley, but the, um, Tucson mayor had asked, had, wasn't allowing a police officer in front of the office anymore because it was, uh, upsetting to people to come and vote. And so, I asked the man, "So my, I have to put my ballot out here." And he said, "Yes." So I said, "How can I be sure someone isn't gonna come and take this big box?" And he said, "No, we're, you know, we're watching it." And I said, "Who's you?" And it was him and an elderly woman who was about eighty-five. I, 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 I don't know, and I'm sorry, meaning that she was, she looked fragile. And I don't know how that could be protected, but I was a little concerned about that. It did make it in because when I checked my ballot, it was counted. But another question is, how, how do we know who we voted for? That's a separate issue, but my point is, is that I don't know if my ballot actually has the, the people that I voted for. And, um, you know, as I said, that's something separate from what I experienced there as an observer. As a poll worker, I was assigned to be a provisional ballot clerk. And that was on election day. And on that day, uh, I had worked the primary in August. So I had an idea of who would come by, what the issues were. Uh, but this time, we had so many more people who needed a provisional ballot than we had been allotted to have in this one precinct. So that was concerning. But the people that came to me were, I had so many people who said, "I didn't ask for a mail-in ballot. My wife isn't listed as a, as an early ballot person, but I am." And that, those are the kind of people that we had a lot of. But secondly, I had people who had just moved here from other states. And most of them were from two, uh, apartment complexes. It was, it was concerning because as we counted them, we probably had over forty people who were in one apartment complex with one address who had moved here from other states that I began to turn away. A little, if, I'd say, I don't know, within the hour, we were so busy that I, I took a break and went outside. And a gentleman with a yellow shirt said, "Um, hi, I'm, I'm with, I'm with the Democratic Party. I'm here from California and I'm here at this precinct specifically. I came from a Phoenix, uh, in Maricopa County, a precinct there. And we're here to help turn, uh, Arizona blue." And I don't know if, just looking at me, he decided that he felt safe saying that to me? Maybe he assumed that I would be okay with that? Um, I was shocked. And he, and I said, "Oh." So, what, he said, "Oh," I said, "So what is, what is your plan? What are you doing?" And he said, "Well, I have lawyers on call to contact immediately if you, if they don't, uh, allow them to vote, people to vote." And I said, "Well, there was a, a cutoff date." And he said, "Nope, every count, every vote should count." So, uh, that made me nervous, of course, because I didn't know the law specifically and I didn't wanna do something that would cause a problem. So I thought, and he said, "Oh, oh, I've only had to turn away, no, oh, just a couple people were turned away and I was able to help one person go back in." Well, that, that was probably sent to me because I was the provisional ballot clerk. So, of course, that, that was somebody that I had to take care of. So I went back in and thought, "Well, this is unusual. I, I'm concerned that somebody outside is going to be calling an attorney on something that I did." Because I said, "No, I sent somebody away and said, 'I'm sorry.' I mean, if you don't have any, uh, proof that you've lived here or proof of having registered, I, I can't, I can't give you a ballot." Uh, so I called the recorder's office and explained this. And she said, "Well, you have to let them, all votes will count, but it's on a case-by-case basis." So, at that point then, I had to call in to the recorder's office every, at every single ballot. And you have to understand, we ran out of spaces. So, I mean, I, and we were at like two hundred, uh, I'm sure you can check on this to be sure, but we were over the amount of ballots we had. But ev- every time I called the recorder's office, they would ask me for their name and their, their, um, birth, uh, date of birth. And when they would look that up, she, the person on the phone would say, "Okay, well, you can go ahead and let them vote." And so, I was trying to find a constant that I could go by so that we could speed up the process. I mean, is it, is it, if they've moved here and they have this, and if they've moved here at a certain date? What is it? And they would not give me any constant. They just said, "You just have to call, um, for, every case is different." So, my concern and why I wrote in was that I had two people right after having a slew of people who came in from other states, uh, wanting to vote without having been registered and allowed to vote per the recorder's office. I then had someone come in from Maricopa County and one from Pinal County. It just happened right after. And each of them, when I called in, they said, "Nope, you're gonna have to have them go back to Maricopa County. And the other one will have to go back to Pinal." And I said, "Well, how is that that this person from Wisconsin and this person from Michigan and this person from Kentucky was able to do that?" And she put me on hold for a second and then came back and said, "Well, it's just, um, that we have their records, uh, more accurately than we have for Maricopa. We just can't, we don't have, we're not able to process a Maricopa County, uh, ballot." So I had to send them away. But then as they, other people were coming through, it made me question why that was happening. So I, I asked them, um, "Do you have information that will prove that you are a resident? That I can, I can, uh, verify that you are registered to vote here?" And they would pull out their card and it very clearly said that they were Republican. They had a voter card. So, to, to test this theory out, I called the recorder's office and asked them. And they were denied. I had to deny them. And so I was in a frenzy trying to take care of all of these people. But I found that the discrepancy between every vote counts and only those that the recorder's office would allow was indicative of how they chose who they wanted to allow to vote. And there was, uh, consistency in the voter preference that they chose. And that concerned me because by the end of the night, which was at 8:15, after we counted all of the votes and they got put in the box and we were waiting for someone to come get them, uh, I'm in the car and the, the election was, was already counted, uh, for Arizona, which I found appalling, first of all, after working fifteen and a half hours taking in votes. But the experience really led me to believe that it was not, there should have been a, a system that we could have followed because I understood that registered voters ended on a certain date and you couldn't come in and vote. But I was having to allow people to vote that literally had just moved here within two weeks, three weeks. And they were all from two different, not all of them, I, I take that back. There was a, a large majority, a large percentage of people who were, had addresses from two apartment complexes. And the last thing is that I had a homeless man who came in with a, with a registration. And the reason I know he's homeless is because I said, "Where do you live?" And he said, he didn't speak English. And he said, "I don't have a home, but when I was at a, at a shelter, they registered me at the recorder's office." So when I called about it and they said, "Well, he was probably registered to be in this precinct." And I said, "But he doesn't live here." And they go, "Well, it's, anybody who was registered downtown can vote." And so, I found that to be odd. And last week, I, for work, I was on the other side of town and I saw this gentleman on the south side of Tucson with his shopping cart. Um, and I, I swung into the, uh, parking space and called him and just said, "Hi, can I talk to you?" And when he saw me, he ran off, you know, for, who knows why. But my, my point is, is these are the kind of people that, that had apparently permission to vote in a precinct that was literally twenty-five miles away because they had a voting card that was given to them from downtown that, it was a downtown precinct that allowed him to vote here. So my, my point is, is that if somebody from Pinal County and Maricopa County can't vote, how is it that, in my, in this precinct, how is it that a homeless man from another area of the town and also, um, people from other states were able to get permission to vote? And that was concerning to me and that's why I'm here.
Ms. Orth, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Giuliani, do you have any questions specific to this witness?
Sure.
Please proceed.
Couple of.
Just, just to give you a, a marker on time, it's 12:02.
So you were there for sixteen and a half hours, Ms. Orth?
On election day?
Yeah.
Yes.
Wow. And you were supposed to, uh, work with, um, the ballots that were being, that were being examined?
Uh, I was working with the voters, the ballots of voters who were not able to walk into the precinct to vote normally on a ballot. So, some of them came to me saying, "It says that I got an early ballot and I never got it." Uh, others said, "It says, it doesn't even say that I'm on there. Um, it says that I've already voted or I'm, I'm not allowed to vote here." Those were the kind of...
So these were ballots that had difficulties?
Yes.
And there were twenty-eight or thir- thirty-five people that were looking at those ballots that you had to observe?
No, that was, okay, the, on, on, I just described to you my experience as a poll worker on election day. Those thirty people that we, I mentioned earlier were, were, when I was a poll observer on the sixteenth of October at the elections office in Pima County.
And you were unable to see what they were doing?
I, it was a room as big as almost maybe half the size of this banquet room. And I was an observer watching thirty...
As far away as we are?
I could walk behind them. I could walk behind them, but I couldn't walk behind thirty-five people at the same time.
And what were they doing?
They were taking them out of the envelope. They had already been, they had been brought in from the recorder's office where that, where the, uh, the ballot had been opened, the envelope had been opened. And according to what I was told, the signature had already been checked in another room.
But you didn't see the signature checked?
No, I didn't get to see that. They would take these out and they would take...
Did you ask to see it?
Yes, and I was not allowed...
And were you refused?
Yes. So they said, and I wasn't allowed to talk to anybody, but I, um, as I said before, I could talk to the supervisor. These people who sat at each of these tables, who were representative of mostly one party with Democratic Party. And, uh, they would take them out of the envelope and then put them, uh, in a pile and then separate the envelope, the inside envelope. In Arizona, we have an outside envelope and the inside envelope and then the ballot, right?
Right.
So the ballot was then collected from the bin. So each table would get a bin and they would, uh, separate them, put the ballots in a, in a pile, put the envelopes in a, in a rubber band, put them to the side and then marked that they had such and such amount of, of regular ballots and such and such amount of duplicates, problematic ballots. That then had to be taken to a table, uh, and they would separate those, take the duplicates, mark them, put them at a table, which, which were then taken to the original room where I had been ushered out of. Not, that I was not to help them.
In a, a room that you were excluded from, they examined the signatures?
Yes. No, they started examining the signatures, then were moved to this room. And then from this room, they were then piled to then be tabulated later.
Did they do a further examination of the signatures?
No, not in this room. The only room that was done...
You observed no examination of signatures and they refused to let you do that?
Right. I was only allowed to watch these people put these in piles. So when I was ushered back in...
So how many, how many ballots do you think, just a rough estimate? How many ballots? A thousand, a hundred, two thousand?
I would say each box had between two hundred and two hundred and fifty ballots. And I was there for five hours. And during that time that I was there, each table went through six to seven to eight, depending on how fast they were and how many mistakes they made. Because many times the, the ballots weren't click, weren't straight and they had to recount them or I would hear them say...
So how do we, how do we do that arithmetic?
Alright, well, let's see, two hundred and fifty times eight. Somebody who's not nervous maybe can say...
Two thousand.
That's per table. And there were about sixteen to seventeen tables of two people doing this at the same time.
So, so the, the, as I best understand this, there were two thousand ballots times seventeen tables?
Yes.
That you or anyone else that you knew have got your ch- got a chance, no Republican got a chance to observe that as far as you know?
Well, I was the only observer allowed in at one time. So, a, a gal took over for me at 1:00 when I left. And I told her, "I, I'm exhausted. I don't know how you can watch all seventeen, but stand behind one of the tables and, and they'll see that this particular table keeps folding them and tearing them. And once that happens, it has to become a duplicate. And when this becomes a duplicate, it goes to that table and it goes to the room where we don't get to see what happens to that. So, tr- how, you can't talk to them, but you can do this and tell them, "Look, that's, that's, that's folded or that's crooked." Or, um, and I said, "If you see one again that has a pencil on it, the supervisor is saying that yes, it, she told me specifically that it could go through." I mean, told me that it, it couldn't, but told them that it could. So I said, "There's some discrepancy in what she's telling me and what she's telling them. So, uh, you know, just do your best to try to, to keep an eye on this particular table is doing this, that particular table when I walk by is doing that. That one over there has a Pima County worker on it and she works here with them. And there's no Republican at that table. So it's, it's, it's very concerning." And so that was the... So when I was ushered out, they came specifically twice to me and said, "Uh, please don't talk to anybody and you cannot leave on your own. Make sure that when it's time, what time do you have to leave so we can walk you out?" When they walked me out, the gentleman said, "Uh, I hope everything went well." And I said, "Well, I'm concerned because here they were, you know, that my only concern is the handling of the ballots, which makes them ineligible to go through the machine correctly." correctly. But it's the room before me and the room after me that's, it's a concern. I, I don't get to see.
Let me just, let me ask you about that. So a certain number of ballots were now put aside as duplicates?
Yes.
Duplicates means that they had a problem?
Yes, that they have to be duplicated.
Right. It didn't mean there were two ballots.
Right, that's what they call them.
Duplicates can sound like two ballots. What it meant was, there's something wrong with it and therefore we may have to duplicate.
Yes, and that's the room that I was originally.
And they, and they were put aside?
Put aside, taken out.
And they were brought into another room and you were not allowed to go in there?
No, I was not allowed to go back there.
So you, you were cut off from that also?
Yes, I was specifically taken out.
You were cut off from observing the problem ballots?
Yes, I was specifically taken out of that room, ushered out and brought into this room, which really was just the room as I explained.
And how many, how many could you estimate that is?
Each table would have an average of, I would say maybe one sixteenth of the pile. So, you know, let's say an average of maybe ten to twenty ballots. But by the time I left, there were, these bins were filled. They would fill them, they would go correct them or whatever it is that they did and brought them back.
Best estimate?
I would say, my guess would be close to, in the time, the day that I was there, just in five hours, maybe two thousand ballots?
Okay.
Yeah.
And you had a sense that when there was problems with ballots or whether someone should vote or not, the choices that were being made were to allow people that appeared to be voting for Biden and the Democrats to vote and declining those who appeared to be people who might be voting for Trump or the Republicans?
Well, yes. I began to get that sense after I saw that people from other states who weren't even registered in the state of Arizona were being allowed to to vote. I was given direction that I had to give them a provisional ballot because as they walked out, there was a gentleman out there who told me, he was specifically there to make sure that every vote, voter who wanted to vote could vote. And so that was on election day though, Mr. Giuliani, that's not on the observant, the day.
Right, I got it, I got it.
And on that day, that's, that happened. And then when I would get a voter who was from another county and had some indication, sometimes they had a shirt that either said Trump on it or they, they showed me their voter card and, and said, I, you know, they gave me some indication that they were a Trump voter. And I had to call on them, like I did for every single person that came in, to the recorder's office, and I was told to send them away. And so it was at that point that I started to see that there, this isn't, this isn't, this can't be right, this can't be right. So I tested this and asked her. And then especially as I saw.
Glad you recognized that.
Yeah, and so when I said, they all, you all live at this apartment complex and you all live at this other one? And, and they said, well, yeah, we have to, you know, we're all coming in to vote. And so I, I said, well, are you a reg, how long have you lived here? Or does your other precinct here? Well, I've lived here, I've lived there. And they still were allowed to vote. Many of them were not residents for more than a month. Other people said they were registered in another state, but that they were here. And, and then, as I said, I think the nail in the coffin for me was when this poor little homeless man, and I speak Spanish, so I spoke to him and said, you know, how are you here? And he said, I was told to come vote, I want to vote. And I said, okay, well, you know, do you, where do you live? And he goes, well, I lived in a shelter downtown. Well, downtown is fifteen miles from where I live. So I'm sure that's not his precinct. He should be voting there.
So you thought there were about two thousand like this, roughly?
I would say easily, just in the five hours that I was there, on one specific day, and that was on a Friday, they were going to be counted, they were being collected to be tabulated on the precinct.
One last question. The gentleman who said he was there to turn Arizona blue?
Yes, that was a guy.
What was he, what was his official position?
He had, he had a sign.
Was he an inspector of some kind?
No, he was an observer, a poll observer that was from California, was from LA. And in, and on a break, I walked out there and, and I, I said hello and just walking and he said, hi. And I said, what are you doing? And he said, well, I'm a poll observer for the Democratic Party and I'm here. I said, oh. And he goes, the weather's hot here, it's not this hot as it is at home. And I said, well, where are you from? And he said, I'm from California. And I said, what are you doing here? And he said, well, I'm here specifically to help turn this precinct blue, this is one of our problem ones. And I said, oh. And as I said to the panel over here, I don't know why he felt comfortable telling me that, but he said, I, and I said, you came all the way from LA? He goes, no, actually, I came from a other precinct in Maricopa where it was another one that we were focusing on, and now I'm here.
What, what was he doing? Was he campaigning? Was he encouraging people to vote for, for Biden?
There was a group of them.
What activities did he take part in to turn Arizona blue?
Well, as I understood, because I was inside working, his job was to make sure that anybody who was turned away to vote, that he would have people he could call, attorneys in his words. He goes, I, I have a couple attorneys that I'm connected to right now that if anybody's not allowed to vote, I can make sure that they're represented. And so anybody who was not allowed to vote in that polling place, I was the one that they would be talking to. So of course, that was, that was somewhat directed at me, since I'm the one who would say, no, you can't vote. So I don't know what else he was doing, but he said there was a group of them that were coming in.
They, they sent him there sometime after you began doing that?
He was there, well, we started at five o'clock in the morning, just getting ready. So when I went out for my, for a break, it was maybe around ten o'clock, and he had been there. And they were, they, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember what he had on his shirt, but they were, they were very clear that they were, they had T-shirts, they said, that they matched. Another person came in to take over for him, and it was a yellow shirt with something written on the front.
Well, thank you very much for your service and for your courage in testifying. I just make one point, Mr. Chairman. Her testimony alone, and I see no reason why she isn't telling the truth. By the way, she is under oath in the sense that she submitted an affidavit under penalty of perjury to what she just testified to.
Thank you, sir.
Thirty-four thousand votes unobserved would change the nature of an election. Just about testimony.
Indeed it would.
One witness.
Ms. Ors, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Members Z, I, I know, I know everybody wants to ask a question. We need to, well, everybody has one. It is now twelve fifteen. I expect this hearing at the rate that we're going, we will be here until late into the night. Please be brief with your question, and I would appreciate it if there's no follow-ups, just so that we can have a lunch break and kind of set the expectation for the folks who are here and get back at it.
And we'll, we'll try to make the witnesses focus a little bit more.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ors. Leo Biussucci, I'm sorry, Representative Biussucci, you're first, and then Mr. Bruley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Anna, for, for being here. Just a quick question about the, the voters that you said were coming in that were from out of town or they just moved there, whatever their reasoning was. Did they have an Arizona ID with an address or anything to show you? Were they on the voter rolls or these?
They were not on the voter rolls. They had out-of-state driver's licenses, but have a, either an electric bill or not, or some kind of a bill that they showed me on their phone, showed me that they lived in this particular precinct. With that, I would call the, the recorder's office.
And you had verified through them that they were indeed legal to vote?
Right. And so then when I'd say, well, when did you move here? Well, I moved here on such and such a date. But you had to have registered, I think in Arizona by the fifteenth, and then it was extended to the twenty-second or the twenty-third. So it was, it was just questionable that they were still allowed to vote, but I had a longtime voter who wasn't allowed to vote from another precinct. And yet someone did vote from another state.
Perfect, thank you.
Senator Bruley?
Thank you, ma'am. When the votes that needed to be duplicated, the, the ones that needed to be corrected, when they went to the end of the room, did you notice anybody in there that was actually overseeing that correction, a Republican or a Democrat?
No, as I mentioned before, that's the first room I went into. And he explained to me that he, this is the room where that would happen, but that I was not allowed to be in there.
When you were in there before they sent you somewhere else, did you see a Republican and a Democrat observe?
No, he was alone, he was, no.
Only one. Do you know how he was registered? Do you know if he's a registered Republican or Democrat?
I, I don't know, but I have an idea, but that would be.
Bottom line is.
We appreciate no speculation, thank you very much.
It's a violation of the law anyway, because you're supposed to have both. Thank you.
All right. Members, one question, and then we're going to break for lunch. Representative Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just have a really quick question. We had our county recorder in Maricopa County instruct voters to cross out mistakes on their ballots for the November election, and we later had a judge say, no, that was likely breaking the law, you can't do that. We've also heard from adjudicators saying that they had seen a full Republican ballot all the way down, but that President Trump's name was crossed out and the other candidate was circled in. Is it possible, in your opinion, in that other room that you weren't allowed to be in when there wasn't a second person watching the adjudication, were there pins allowed? Were there, were they, would someone be able to cross out one candidate and vote for someone else?
Well, again, I wasn't in there to be able to say this accurately, but there's only, you know, can make an assumption, if, if a room requires two people and an observer, that a person by themselves, it's possible, of course it's possible, that that's what happened. But those are the kind of ballots that I'd see, that, because I was able to see them as they came through in this room, there was a, they were either all for GOP or all for the Democratic Party. But one of the president, little oval, had been marked off, or not marked, crossed, which makes it a problematic ballot. So that would have to go into the other room that you're asking me about. And again, I wasn't in there to be able to speak accurately about what this person could or could have done or didn't do. And that to me was the problem in this whole issue. I, I, I'm useless to be able to watch people just putting them in order. I, we should have had an observer watching.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Ors, thank you very much for your testimony. Ladies and gentlemen, here's how we're going to manage the lunch break. As you leave, please wait a minute before you walk out the door or you won't get back in. As you're walking out the door, you'll be given an armband. And in order to come back in, you'll have to show that armband. We are going to break, it's now twelve twenty-two. We will be back here at one o'clock.
All right, welcome, everybody. Again, this is Liz Willis with Blake with Bright Side Broadcasting Network. We are live on the ground here in Phoenix, Arizona, where Team Trump is doing their legal hearing regarding election irregularities in the state of Arizona. We've heard from three witnesses already, and it looks like we're going to be going late into the night, so we will be taking a lunch break and reconvening at one, so don't go anywhere. We'll bring you the live coverage right back. But before we go anywhere, we have a couple things we'd just like to point out from what we've heard already today. And to thank our partners over at MyPillow, we know that getting a restful night's sleep is crucial to waking up on the right side of the bed. And with Christmas right around the corner, now is the perfect time to stock up on all these products from a company with a patriot-owned company. Visit mypillow.com to stock up on all the gifts for yourself and your loved ones. MyPillow guarantees ultimate relaxation with a wide variety of items to choose from, ranging from ultra plush towels, dog beds, mattress toppers, and Giza Dream Sheets and so much more, including one of their biggest savings so far, which is their regular MyPillows valued at sixty-nine ninety-eight. If you use code RSB and you can get those right now for just twenty-nine ninety-eight, a huge savings. Again, mypillow.com has hundreds of products to choose from, and if you use code RSBN at checkout, you can get up to sixty-six percent off your entire order. This is the perfect time to support a conservative company right before the holidays. Go ahead and get your shopping done now. You do not want to wait till it's too late. Blake, with that being said, I mean, what, what do you think so far? A lot has happened today, we've heard a lot of information.
There's, there's been an awful lot of information presented, and I think that Mayor Giuliani's remarks at the beginning about how there's a narrative out there that the election was the most secure ever, and I think, believe he said, please don't interrupt that narrative with the truth. And that's really, that's really what I think. I mean, I believe that we're in a situation where there's limited media coverage of this event, and it's not because of the information being provided isn't newsworthy, it's not because there aren't facts here that are being discovered or being given to the lawmakers of Arizona for consideration, it's because.
It doesn't fit their narrative.
Exactly. Other networks are perhaps just not feeling that there's a story here. And in fact, this would be the largest political story of this century and even last century. I mean, it's a scandal of amendist proportions if, in fact, voter fraud can be proven. They're not even looking for it, and I think that's, that's disturbing.
Not in the slightest. And we've been to Phoenix a lot, we know Fox Five Phoenix is at all the rallies, and I thought that we'd at least see them here today. But like you said, they don't even care. I mean, not even enough to give it an ounce of oxygen to breathe on their nightly news routine. So it's, it's shocking, it's upsetting, but we honestly don't need them. We have around two hundred thousand watching alone on YouTube, so thank you to everyone for tuning in. This should not be a polarizing topic. I think people on both sides of the spectrum right now should be worried about election integrity. Hearing these witnesses factually, it just doesn't make sense. Dominion Software and Smartmatic Software Systems, which is owned by Hugo Chavez and has been raised in so many corrupt Central and South American countries like Venezuela, I mean, that alone should tell you, that's not something that we want to be utilizing here in the United States when it is our election integrity, the presidential election of the United States, something's got to give.
Yes, and both the Army Colonel and the former Senator from Michigan presented pretty clear evidence that these servers were connected to the internet, that they weren't air gapped, they were not just, you know, not immune from tampering by some form of malicious actor who wanted to gain access to those totals. So saying that it's the flashcards that they're using to transfer votes and just, really, it's really, I don't, the, just the fact that some of the Dominion servers run on Windows ten alone is enough for me to just be, really give pause to it. I mean, the fact that these things are so easily manipulated by operators, and that even one, one operator with the correct permissions at a remote workstation through the network, as these machines are designed to work, has the ability to change totals, is completely off-putting. You know, Janet Ellis had a great quote too, and that's, that was that, we're not asking you to overturn an election, we're asking you to ensure that corruption does not stand. And I think that's the core of what all of these hearings are about, to educate the American public that this is, the election took place, the results are there, but the results that we're looking at are fraudulent, are, are, at the very least, beset by the allegations and the possibility of fraud and the fingerprints of fraud. It's, it's completely there. And what she's tasking the lawmakers to do is basically admit that you're not overturning an election, you're taking back your constitutional authority as a member of your state legislature to appoint the electors that you feel are appropriate for your state.
Thank you. And we are about to wrap it up here. Great commentary, Blake. About to wrap it up here, we need to clear out this room, but we do want to remind you guys that Bright Side Broadcasting Network is almost entirely viewer-funded, meaning we rely on your donations to go from rally to rally, hearing to hearing, and to cover the White House and the March for Trump, which is currently going on today. So it's a bus tour covering twenty-three cities in two weeks, and we cover all of that. There's a lot going on right now, we're providing as much content as possible. So if you've enjoyed seeing a little bit of different avenues here at RSBN, then keep those donations coming and we'll keep providing you some of the greatest coverage that we possibly can. you some of the greatest coverage that we possibly can. There's a number of ways you can support us, the first one is by clicking that dollar sign in the bottom right-hand corner of the YouTube Super Chat, and the second way is via our website. Whether you donate or not, check out our website, that's www.rsbnetwork.com/donate. The third way is by sending a check, and we love to read these letters that come with the checks, and that is send those to rsb@1550opalikaerod, suite 6, Box 3, 44, Auburn, Alabama, 36830. Moderators, thank you for being here today, drop those addresses down below. We are gonna hop out of here for exactly 30 minutes, and we will be right back, so don't go anywhere, this is the stream you want to stay on.
We'll see you after the lunch break.
Hello, Brightside Broadcasting Network, I'm Mike Lindell, the inventor and CEO of MyPillow, and I've got some great news for you. Today, you can save up to 66%.
Ladies and gentlemen, first thing I'd like to ask is that you silence your cell phones, there is ample news coverage, so we're going to ask that you set your phones down to listen to the evidence that's going to be presented. I'd first like to start with introductions of the panel. Representative Cook, if you would please start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is David Club, I represent District 8, which is in the counties of Hela and Pinal, in the great state of Arizona, and I am honored to be here with people setting up this table, and I am extremely honored representing the people of my district, and answering the information today, the input, and, Chairman, I know the rest of my time.
Thank you. Senator-elect Tony County, who has been on my team for the 36th season, which is now here in Arizona. I'm here today to discuss what is true here, and the results of it was important, and we have so many things to look at, and I'm not sure. I thought about, what can we do with all of this? It might have been something like Patrick said, from back to the beginning. Beginning of his presidency, he had George Washington, who was known for the drums, and he told his friend, uh... "Charles Simpson's truth will ultimately prevail where pains and threats be stopped. It may be painful to me just to believe in him."
Uh, thank you for having me here today. I am Brad Roberts, and I'm the representative for Legislature District 11, which is Pinal County, Hema County, City of Maricopa, Casa Grande, Arizona City, uh... Several others, and I'm happy to be here today to provide, uh, take part with your, uh, dear evidence and give answers to what so many people are looking forward to hearing. But they're not, they are answers that you want to hear, or they're answers that you don't want to hear, and you need answers, and I'm happy to take part in it. Thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm Senator-elect Nancy Barto, and I am so pleased to be here on behalf of the incredible voters in District 15.
As well as Facebook Livecast, Right Side Broadcasting.
Access your ballot and verify how it was cast via, via the tracking on that. Boy, I, I mean, that's, people want accountability, and there's, there's definitely a call to go back to paper ballots, which I believe is a hundred percent something that we need to have, be able to have audited afterwards. What we found out today, though, is they just take those ballots that you bubble in, and then they create an electronic record of it, and then that's the actual vote, and then that's stored on the company's server, and of course, the company being foreign-owned, who knows what happens to it, but there's also, there's also, it'd be trivial to write the software needed to make a bubble move from one bubble to another, to make a mark, essentially to change a vote. That's something that's obviously can happen, and in the lack, uh, with the lack, complete lack of paper ballots as an audit train, you'll trail, you will never find that.
Yeah, absolutely. There's no way to guarantee perfection, especially right now with the amount of mass mail-in, uh, ballots that have been received. However, I mean, if you look just at simple Scantrons from back in the day, high school, my, uh, test answers got marked wrong all the time, and the teacher would come say, oh, there's this problem with the machine. However, this is 2020, this should not be an issue. We should have these solutions fixed right now, and it might sound crazy, but personally, I think, uh, I think Elon Musk might be the man for the job. Someone's got to do it, and the US government is clearly failing and lacking to do so right now. I think that might be time to set a standard for states across the United States. Of course, I don't want to say yes, like, big governments get in there and change everything, but there has to be a standard. This is crazy. Every single state has so many different rules, it's almost enti- entirely impossible to monitor this process.
I can't say one thing, though. We conservatives are very big on the concept of states' rights. This is something where that hurts us a little bit, because every state does have the ability to set whatever voting standards they feel are appropriate for their locality. So, this is one of those edgy ones where, yeah, it might be great, but at the same time, this is part of the Tenth Amendment, and since in, in the Constitution, that's not reserved for the federal government, that is the province of the states to, to set those. I would, I would love if we could develop something, and they could choose from a menu of which one they would want.
Absolutely. And this again should not be a partisan issue, whether you're liberal, or conservative, or moderate, it doesn't matter. I mean, you should want to know that your vote was counted a hundred percent the way that you casted it for. So it's wild to hear that people are opposing these hearings that are going on right behind me, and it's wild to me to be on Twitter and have such crazy trolls out there. I mean, right now, President Trump and his legal team are, legal team are not fighting for, um, him to be president, or him to be chosen over Joe Biden. Right now, they're fighting for the integrity of the presidential election process within the United States of America, and making sure that we don't turn out to be another Venezuela.
Yes, and when we, when we talk about, um, fixing future elections, I mean, that's one thing. We can maybe get to that probably, probably best addressed in February. Right now, we need to focus on the election at hand, and people are waking up, people across America tuning in here, finding out news online from not the mainstream media sources, but the sources that are really digging, the sources that are telling the truth about this, the sources that are revealing the, really, the Byzantine Way in which election records are being handled. I mean, if you need a flowchart that's that complicated to tell you what's happening with an election and a ballot, who knew what it was like? I mean, you, you know that they're doing something with it, but that's just, we...
Yeah, it was a lot.
It's an absurd level of complication, and, and as we can see, it's not, it's not instilling confidence. People aren't really becoming, boy, I feel really great that all my ballot is doing all that and being turned into electronic record and sent somewhere on the internet and stored in a server, and by the way, it's also, you know, accessible from anybody overseas with an internet connection. That, that doesn't sound like election security to me, and people are waking up, there's hundreds of them outside, there's hundreds of them at every state capital in the United States on Saturdays at noon for the Stop the Steal rallies, applying pressure to their state lawmakers to really look at these votes, and, you know, they have the constitutional authority to override the vote and appoint the electors as they see fit.
Absolutely, and that brings me to a great point. This election is not over. We still have, um, a huge Senate race going on in the state of Georgia. We have Kelly Loeffler and David Perdue. That's gonna be on January 5th, and I don't want this, what's going on here today, this hearing, I know, especially for me, I feel it, I understand you guys. As a registered Georgia voter, I know that it kind of feels right now like our votes don't matter, um, that no matter what happens, the Democrats are gonna cheat, and this, whether it be SmartMatics or Dominion, a mix of both of these software systems, you name it, um, just continue to get out there and vote, vote in person if you can. Um, I think that is one of the best things you can possibly do, but we have got to secure this Senate. We do not want crazy Joe Biden to be able to push some of his legislature.
True, and the way that, in Georgia, in the case of Georgia and the runoffs, even if the same mechanisms of fraud were applied, which I don't believe they'll be able to do because of the scrutiny, but even if they were, conservatives in that state could still defeat that cheating scheme with massive turnout. Because as we've seen in all these states where it's apparent, it is the massive turnout generated by President Trump's voters that caused the signature of the fraud to be so high that it was so plainly obvious. And that massive turnout is something that we, we have to call on the voters of Georgia to do once again. I mean, literally, the legislative fate of our country could be in your hands. This is not the time to give up the fight, this is not the time to sit back and say, oh, no, my vote doesn't matter. That is just a level of election suppression that you can't afford to let happen to you. You've got to get out there and vote, and, you know, and if you work or live in a state that's adjoins Georgia, and you've got some time, maybe you can find it to, you know, maybe you've got the ability to, to, to be there for a little bit, do some volunteering, do some phone banking from, you can do phone banking from your own house on getting out the vote, but, boy, if you can help out the Republican Party in Georgia, turn out the vote for the senators in the, in the runoff, that, I can't think of something better to be really doing with your weekends in, uh, between now. I think it's January 5th, is that runoff?
Absolutely, yeah. Um, so that's gonna be Georgia for Ground Zero. You guys, make sure you support Georgia, my home state. We have to make sure that Georgia helps keep the Senate majority for the GOP. It's a crucial part of this 2020 presidential election, something that's not to be undermined. Um, real quickly, we want to say thank you to our partners over at MyPillow. Mike Lindell, the CEO of MyPillow, is an incredible patriot. You've seen him on the campaign trail numerous times, getting the crowd excited for President Trump, and now he's helping support us at Right Side Broadcasting Network. So a portion of all these sales is going to come back and help support RSPN, whether it be going to DC, being here in Phoenix at today's hearing, or going to Georgia's rally on Saturday. We are very excited to get back to a President Trump rally. You name it, Right Side Broadcasting Network is there to cover it, and that's because of MyPillow and our viewers like you who have donated to RSPN. But right now, MyPillow has an incredible special, where it's normally $69.98 for a regular MyPillow. You can use code RSPN for up to 66% off, and that total is gonna go down to $29.98. It's not just pillows, they have over 100 products to choose from. They have mattress toppers, uh, Giza Dream Sheets, dog beds, plush robes, towels, you name it. It's probably on that website, so go and check it out. That's www.mypillow.com. Don't forget, the holidays are right around the corner. This is the perfect time to get all your shopping done. And as a conscious consumer, it's so important to make sure that you're supporting other conservatives and companies like Mike Lindell and MyPillow. So again, that's mypillow.com. The best code out there, I mean, it's Cyber Monday, right? So this is better than any Cyber Monday deal you're going to find. Go to mypillow.com and use code RSPN, four letters, at checkout for up to 66% off your entire order. A part of yours a little bit more about how they can, uh, donate to RSPN to help keep us on air and to travel and bringing these events.
Yes, I can tell you that. Um, one of the ways you can donate is if you're watching us on YouTube, you can go down to the Super Chat and put in a cash donation there. It allows you to append a message if you'd like, and that way, people can not only see your donation, but see that the, see the message you'd like to put in there. I don't know if we'll have time to read out any of those, where I see it that, it does show your support. There's also levels of, uh, I believe it's
Tears?
Tears that you can join, and one of those, which not many of you know about, is you can actually get all of the rally coverage in 4K replays. So tremendous replays that you could put up on your screen to watch. Um, I'm gonna kick it back to you for the address, because I'm not sure about the zip code, so I'll let you do that one.
You can send a check, or letter, or constructive criticism, whatever it may be, to 1550 Opelika Road, Suite 6, Box... Box 34, Suite 6, wow. 1550 Opelika Road, Suite 6, Box 344, Auburn, Alabama 36830. I'm sorry for the slip of the tongue. It's a lot of numbers, it gets me sometimes. But again, moderators, if you don't mind dropping that address in the chat room so our viewers can find it, and again, a lot of you are just now tuning in, they have found us. So you can follow me. My name is Liz Willis, that's L-I-Z-W-I-L-L-I-S. I work for Right Side Broadcasting Network, the channel you're watching right now. You can follow me, in fact, I, please do, on Twitter, it's @LizWillis underscore, and on Instagram, @LizWillis. Again, that's L-I-Z-W-I-L-L-I-S.
Okay, so that's the five-minute warning. I guess I, I'll give my Twitter handle, too. It's not as obvious, but, um, I'm at @Brick underscore suit, and it's just not the appropriate venue for the brick suit today, for those of you who have asked. So, you know, there are times when, more traditional, and, you know, one of those is, is where I might, if I were able to catch up with it, where I might wear the brick suit, is, is the Bus Tour. The Bus Tour, I mean, also sponsored by Mike Lindell and MyPillow. That's a fabulous, uh, I think it's, um, they started out yesterday in Doral, Florida. It's 14 days, I think it's 28 cities and about 18 states. So they're gonna wind their way from Florida all the way up into Michigan, into, uh, Wisconsin, Minnesota, and then end up in DC on the 12th of December. So you check out that website, which you can find, uh, from our coverage at RSPN, and find it, find a date that you can meet up with them. They're gonna be caravanning, it's gonna be Trump convoys on the freeway, people on overpasses. I think we're gonna have a lot of coverage.
I'm gonna leave you for two minutes. I'm gonna see if I can get some investigative journalism going. I just need to find out about Michigan tomorrow, and while, before the lawyers speak, maybe they'll give a clear cut.
All right, so while Liz is finding that out, I'm just gonna turn around and take a peek at the room here. I'm gonna estimate that it's probably, probably about 50% full right now. Mayor Giuliani and his team have re-entered the venue. I see Jenna Ellis there, um, and their aides. The lawmakers are back at their, at their dais, at the tables that they're sitting at. We're ready to bring it to you as soon as it starts, which is gonna be pretty soon. They've given us a five-minute warning and a, maybe a three-minute warning, and it will not be long before this starts again. So I think the... So I think the, I'm really excited to, to see the, um, how, how this message today has been received so far outside. People are angry. People are upset. People are stunned that their voices have been perverted in such a way that their, that their votes have, and there's the two-minute warning. So people outside, what I talked to, when I went outside to see the protests there, they're upset that their votes have been treated so carelessly that the custody, one of the issues that was raised in the hearing so far is the custody of the ballots is, is very poorly executed and questionable. And, and that brings into question the entire results of the election. So, you know, I, I am very, very eager to see, to hear what's gonna be coming up in the second part of this hearing. Because my opinion is that the, what we've heard so far has been extremely powerful. And I can't believe that they have structured the witness list in such a way that subsequent witnesses would have diminishing impact. I believe that their information is gonna be even more impactful. And I think we're gonna begin to hear more and more about what's actually happening in Arizona. The first two, first two witnesses today talked in general about voting systems, the experience that he had witnessed in Michigan. And then we had the woman who was the, the election official in Arizona begin to talk about her experience on the ground. So I think we're gonna see more and more of impact that is, more and more information that's absolutely about Arizona in specific and less general information as we go forward. Liz, what'd you find out about tomorrow?
Absolutely nothing. They won't tell me anything. So I'm a little annoyed. You know, it's hard as press. We wanna help their, them. We wanna be there to support them. And I know they may not know who everyone is, but I just need to know where this frickin' hearing is tomorrow in Michigan. So RSPN can be there to broadcast. I mean, we have 100,000 watching right now and it's just us. Millions of people need to see this.
Maybe, maybe one of our viewers works in a hotel industry in Michigan and has some information and they could send us via DM or something like that. Well, we'll accept that. I mean, that's a, you know, that's a nice little tip for us to have.
Yeah. If you have any information, if you're the Michigan GOP or the Senate Republicans, if you know anything about tomorrow's hearing, please DM me at LizWillis underscore on Twitter. I'm anxious to be able to get my team there.
And that's the gavel. So we're gonna get out of the way and bring you the second half of today's election integrity hearings.
The next witness that we're going to have up is Mr. Brainard. And I'm not sure he's in the room yet. Matt Brainard. I really hope I'm not just killing his name. And then after Matt Brainard, we're going to have Dr. Shiva, just so that you know the, kind of the lineup of what we're doing. And then after Dr. Shiva, as if your minds are not numb enough yet from all of the statistical analysis, we'll have a presentation by Bobby Penton. And then after that, we'll, we'll have a series of individuals who have firsthand knowledge of what has happened at various polls, a number of poll workers. And then finally, we're going to hopefully wrap things up before, we, we need to do a hard stop at 5:30 because there are a number of people who have flights that are gonna be outbound by 6 o'clock. So that's kind of the order of things. I do not intend for us to take a break this afternoon. We've had an extended lunch by about 10 minutes. So if you need to use the facilities, please do so without causing a disruption. Also, I'm asking, once again, please either turn your phones off or silence them. So we're just waiting on Mr. Brainard. Thank you very much. Know if he's going to be here in just a moment. Mr. Brainard. Okay. My apologies for logistics being a bit of an issue here. Would you be Matt Brainard? Hot diggity. We can get on, on their way. Mr. Brainard is the next one on the list.
If you're not, you are now.
Yeah. You're gonna be at that table, sir, right there. Yep. Looks like you're gonna have to have a minute to get set up. Is that, maybe not so? So?
I think so.
All right. And I presume you want to have what you have to show us on the screen as well? Guys will take care of that. While you're doing that, Mr. Brainard, will you be able to accomplish what you've got to say in 30 minutes?
Hopefully less.
That would be a blessing. Thank you very much. As soon as we got you on the screen. While we're waiting now and that, would you please give your name and your credentials? And just a 10 seconds on what you expect to show?
Sure. My name is Matt Brainard. I'm the leader of the Voter Integrity Project, looking into anomalies and potential illegal ballots cast in this election in the six pivotal states, including Arizona. I have a background working in voter data, going back over 20 years with the Republican National Committee, with President Trump's campaign, with election administration or redistricting firm, Election Data Services. So this is an area where I have a lot of experience and expertise. So are you ready for me to start?
Yes, please. Say, thank you.
So, a couple of days after the election, I, uh... I and a team of dedicated individuals with experience similar to my own in the field of voter data and analysis, decided to engage in an experiment of sorts to detect potentially illegal ballots. Without any preconceived notions about what we might find, what we wanna find, just to try to determine the truth using a couple of different analytical methods. Fortunately, despite the great expense of this experiment, we were able to fundraise through crowdsourcing. In a very short order, we've raised over $600,000 from almost 9,000 different donors all over the country who are interested in finding the truth. And we entered this with no, although many of us have political biases, personally, we brought none of those biases to our analysis. We just decided we wanted to try to find the truth using methods we believe to be reliable. Our findings were across the country, we found a tremendous number of anomalies. And Arizona is at the forefront of many of the anomalies we found. Now, unlike many other states that we evaluated, there were some unique limitations to our analysis in Arizona. In general, we were only able to get data for early and absentee voters in all of the six states we targeted. In Arizona, we were only able to get early and absentee voters for the county of Maricopa. So all the numbers I'm sharing with you, all the analysis is based solely on Maricopa. Now, as the other counties make their data available, we'll certainly try to update these reports and these, these numbers. But just looking at Maricopa, we found some interesting results. So I'm going to open up a PowerPoint that kind of covers the country, but I'm really just gonna speak about Arizona, which is, I know what, what you're interested in. So... Okay. So we ran five or six different experiments on each of these states. One experiment that we ran, where we isolated a universe of voters according to the state who had been sent an absentee ballot but did not return that ballot. And we asked them two questions. One, we asked them, you know, by reaching out to them via phone, because we were operating three different call centers to try to reach these people to confirm whether or not they had ever requested that absentee ballot and whether or not they returned it. So in Arizona, we were able to reach 2,044 people who had been identified as having requested an absentee ballot and not returned it, according to the state. Of them said they'd never requested that ballot. Then, among the individuals who did say they did request it, we asked, well, did you send it back? And among those of the overall universe, we had 354 of them say, yeah, I actually mailed it back despite the state not recording, having received it back. Now, I've got a little bit of audio visual for you because our call centers were recording phone calls. Now, none of this is speculative. I know that some people of other analysts in some of the court cases I've been involved in have taken our numbers and then projected them. Say, for example, projecting that 44% of the, did not request of our sample out to the entire universe of about a half a million on return and saying, these are the number of ballots that it seems or appears possible that somebody else requested those ballots other than the voter of record. And, but I, I'm not doing that myself. Others are welcome to make that analysis. I don't have a background as a statistician. But what I do have is I'd like to share with you some of the audio recordings of at least two of the individuals we spoke to, who said that they did not get a ballot, they did not request the ballot despite being sent them. Now, these, these audio recordings have been modified to cut out like their last names because we don't wanna inadvertently dox anybody here. But if, if somebody privately, as you're in positions of authority in the legislature, wants full recordings, we're more than happy to share that with you, more than happy to give you the names, addresses, phone numbers of everybody we've identified in these categories. Okay? So I'm gonna play the one audio recording of an individual. Bear with me as I make some adjustments.
We recognize that technology is great until you actually need to have it work.
Yeah, but we could find a workaround if we need to. So I'm just gonna hold the mic to the computer speaker.
Can't hear it.
Okay, we'll try it again. Okay.
Hello, this is Mary Kemper with Voter Integrity Fund. May I please speak to Charles?
The first. Who are you with?
Voter Integrity Fund. Charles March in the state of Arizona and is, is having requested an absentee ballot. Did you request an absentee ballot?
Absolutely did not.
No. Okay. And did you, okay, no. Okay, somebody from our team will follow up with you. And can you please give us the best phone number or is it this?
So I'll play for you the second example.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, this is Zofa.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Tyje. I'm with the Voter Integrity Fund. In the state of Eric, I mean Arizona, it said that she requested an absentee ballot. I'm just making sure that she requested that ballot.
No, I did not request an absentee ballot.
Okay, somebody from our team will follow up with you. Is this a good number to follow back up with you on?
Yes.
All right, all right. Well, I appreciate your time and you have a good day.
Okay.
Excuse me, Matt, before you go too much further, can you tell me what counties were those calls made to?
The only county that's released data for us is Maricopa.
All right, thank you.
Sure. I'm gonna proceed. So we, with some of the other experiments we ran, one of them was, again, no one's ever kind of tried to do this after an election before. Nobody's had the interest or the funds to do so, to like, to really think about, you know, if somebody was, if people were trying to cast illegally, illegal ballots, either it was part of an organized voter fraud effort or just somebody just deciding I'm gonna cast a ballot I shouldn't, maybe a ballot that's not for my name, just one individual deciding, you know, I got an absentee ballot requested to this address, my address. This person doesn't live in here anymore, but maybe I should fill it out, see if I can cast it, or, you know, potential clerical errors. And no one's ever really done this before. So we, we tried some stuff that just kind of, that, that made us curious, things that we thought we might find. So in Arizona, we actually polled a universe of people who had never voted before except they've showed up and voted this election. And just called them and say, hey, did you actually cast that ballot? It's very hard. Any of you who've, I'm sure in your, maybe races for office have operated phone centers or conducted public polling, when you start out with a universe that's, you know, pretty big, once you start trying to dial it and get responses, that number, that universe shrinks a lot, shrinks very quickly. Because you have a broad universe and you have to try to pen phone numbers to it and you get maybe half of them or so. And the people who, the numbers are correct, or they don't go to voicemail, or some other problem. People who actually pick up the phone and then start answering questions, that, that universe shrinks a lot. So we did this experiment in Arizona with some, again, voters who'd never voted before. Again, this, and, and asked them if they had cast that ballot. Now, about 1% of them told us that they didn't. But remember, those were people willing to talk to us and, and, you know, admit that they did not cast a ballot. And many of the people we reached, we had to leave voice messages for. We were just, couldn't get ahold of. But one person in particular, I wanna play a video for you guys, who, we left him a voicemail, but he never talked to us. So he's not included in these numbers. So I wanna share just a clip if I can from a program. Let me adjust the volume here.
Maricopa County, Arizona, to Tennessee about five months ago, so he could train for the Olympics. So you can imagine the surprise when he got a message from something called the Voter Integrity Fund.
The state of Arizona is reporting that a ballot was cast in the name of Naishan Garrett in the general election on Tuesday. If Naishan Garrett did not cast this ballot, please call us back.
Well, that doesn't sound fishy at all, right? Well, Naishan didn't think so either. So he went to the state of Arizona's voting website only to discover that his ballot had been accepted. And Maricopa County's voter portal said his ballot was signature verified and counted. The only problem is he'd already voted in Tennessee. He didn't vote in Arizona. Naishan Garrett joins me now. Naishan, great to see you. Now, you never received an Arizona absentee ballot or an application for mail-in ballot. So who the heck cast your ballot in Arizona?
That is an excellent question. That is an excellent question. I have no idea. And that's the reason why I'm on here with you tonight.
So I'm gonna stop the video there. But I think you get the drift of that. I'm actually gonna play for you another recording here, which actually, this one was particularly interesting to me.
Hi, my name is Thomas with the Voter Integrity Fund. May I please speak with Riley?
Yep, speaking to him.
All right. Hi, can you confirm whether or not you cast a ballot in the state of Arizona?
I'm a felon, so I can't vote.
All right. Oh, here. According to the state of Arizona, somebody cast a ballot in your name and you may be a victim of voter fraud. Can you please give us the best number to reach you?
I mean, probably the way you're calling me at.
So I cut the video, because, you know, whenever we reach somebody like this, we want to ask them a couple of questions. Is the best number to reach you at? Would you be willing to sign a declaration or something like that? So we could pass that off to attorneys. So I think those are two, and we've got hundreds of them of different categories. So we'll, as, as you've heard, we have recordings of everyone we spoke to of the 900 or so that didn't request, of the 354 that said they... of the 354 that said they did request but mailed it back and somehow the state never got their vote. I want to talk about one of the other experiments we ran. We, at great expense, obtained a national voter file. And we used it to determine people who may have been registered here, moved to another state, registered to vote there, I believe invalidating their residency or inability to vote here, and then cast a ballot back here. Because, you know, we all have anecdotes, right? We've all heard crazy stories. I've had people, since this project has started, emailing me stories about suspicious, the sister-in-law or brother-in-law they don't like, they suspect they may have cast two ballots. They want me to look into it and giving me their full addresses and dates of birth. Or I've also received, though, screenshots of social media profiles saying this person, they live in New York City. They've lived here a long time. But they figured their vote wouldn't really matter in New York City, but it would matter back in Arizona. So, there's anecdotes, right? I don't think, I don't think it's ever possible to maybe get enough of those anecdotes to have a meaningful number. But what we did is we took our national voter file and looked at registration dates there. And then we looked at the registration dates of people we matched it to in Arizona, where they moved from Arizona to California, for example, registered to vote there, and then decided they shopped their ballot potentially, or they had the ballot cast in their name and decided, "You know what? My vote might count more in Arizona than it does in California, swing state." So, we were able to identify these individuals who had a subsequent registration out of state but cast their early absentee here. Again, just Maricopa County and just early absentee, no Election Day. We also did an NCOA analysis. And when people move from one state to another, the postal service sort of tracks that. Often, people fill out an NCOA card saying, "I've moved here. Please forward my mail." It's a pretty good indicator that established residency somewhere else. And we found among this population a substantial number who, NCOAed to another state, but cast their ballot here. Now, I have kind of earned the reputation lately as kind of a data guy, but I work as a general consultant. I do all kinds of work around the country for candidates. Everything from speeches to fundraising to designing literature. I've knocked on over 1,000 doors myself, this country, this cycle in states all over the country. And I can tell you that a lot of times, you know, people are, they move and they're very careful about where they can vote, where they can make potential, potentially cast their vote, where they think, if they have options, they make a choice. And sometimes they don't always make the right choice. So, just in my experience of that, you know, we, it's not that uncommon. So, people move, but they can still vote here. They get an absentee request forwarded to them and they cast the ballot. They shouldn't. When we combine those numbers together for your state and we merge and we take out some that we estimate to have been military moves, which doesn't, they don't actually lose their ability to vote in the state, we came up with a total of about 5,700 or so, just Maricopa, just early absentees. We also identified a population of double voters. Now, what's unique about this is that, again, we're not, we're not looking at people who may be voted in person in California and voted by mail here. We're only able, because of limited data in many states, to compare early absentee voters to early absentee voters in other states. So, if they devoted early absentee in Arizona, voted early absentee, for example, in California, they show up here. But if, if and when we get access to Election Day voter lists, we'll be able to, these numbers will inevitably go up. And also, we've got a lot of limitations on our ability to match. One of those limitations is the availability of full and accurate dates of birth from states on their voter lists. In a lot of cases, states will suppress that. And that prevents us from being able to get a successful match on somebody who moved out of state with a subsequent registration. Because for us, for our project, we can't be the Voter Integrity Project without integrity. That requires a very tight match. So, we're sure it's not just somebody with the same name or even somebody with the same name, born in the same year. But it's got to be day, month, year, exact, as best we can. And we actually try to match on cell phones, too, when we're able to do that. So, that's, that kind of concludes the initial findings that I wanted to share with you about, about your state in particular. And I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to ask this gentleman some questions?
You go ahead.
No? All right. Matt, I really appreciate you coming in. I know that you flew in, I think, late last night to make a short and succinct presentation. Can you tell me, relative to the work that you've done, with certainty, how many votes were cast that should not have been? Just a high-level number. Because obviously, for example, the Trump campaign would like to see 10,457 votes overturned. But, not to be exact, but are we there based on the work that you've done? Because as we look at your work and the work of other people, we're starting to chip away at that number in a pretty serious way.
I would say there's two levels of confidence I have, okay? The first level of confidence is very, and I'm very confident that we get very close to that number when we take the residency issues and then apply it to the other counties for which we weren't able to obtain data. The second level of confidence is where you take a number of projection. You go back out to low-activity analysis and NCO analysis, which I don't like to get in the weeds, but these are basically people telling us that they had votes, that they didn't cast votes, they were cast in their name. If you're comfortable projecting these numbers to the population that we were trying to reach via phone that we just couldn't, I think then you reach another level of certainty that you're able to bridge that gap. So, I think that the, I have a high degree of confidence that the number of ballots that were cast that should not have been cast, illegal ballots, surpasses the margin of victory as it stands right now.
Thank you very much. Representative Biassucci, you're the first to ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second, I guess.
Yeah. Thank you, Matt, very much for your presentation. I just had a couple of questions. For the 44% that you said did not request an early ballot but got one, how many people did you poll to get that 44%?
Well, we started off, as you can see in the chart, or maybe you can't see, with a large number of unreturned ballots in your state, in Maricopa. And then we reached out, we were able to get a phone match to maybe a quarter million of those. The number we were able to reach via phone is 2,044. The number who said they did not request that ballot was 902. Now, when your colleague asked me the question about how many, you know, what's the margin of illegally cast ballots, I don't apply any of this. But this does raise a lot of questions. And should a ballot be counted if somebody themselves did not actually request it?
Right. That's a very good, yeah, that's why I'm asking that question, absolutely. And then the 1%, was it the same?
That was among the, this is among our shot in the dark, calling people on the phone to ask them, "Did you, did you actually cast the ballot?" Because their voting history suggested that they, well, that they hadn't voted very often, if at all. So, that's this universe that we decided to reach out to. And we just, we pulled the data load in the state of your, in case of your state, of about 35,000.
The 1% of 35,000?
Right, but that, that universe could potentially have been much larger. I just wanted to give our phone center an amount to sort of chew on. And, you know, the numbers, again, we saw the video of Mr. Garrett. We never spoke to him. He doesn't show up in these numbers. He just got the voice message. And, you know, I got to tell you, the tremendous amount of courage for someone to do what he did because when you come public, become public, come forward in a situation like this willing to say that you may have been a victim of voter fraud, you're all in the public spotlight, right? You're used to this. But if you're just some guy who seems to be the victim of voter fraud, all the things that got to, have to go through your mind are, you're going to have a target in your back. You're going to have potential media trying to trash you, dox you.
Sure.
You know, do you have to talk to your wife about it first? What impact can it have on your occupation, on your family? So, the willingness of him to actually go on television, I think there's got to be so many more people that just, not that they didn't have this courage, but just their life conditions would not allow them to come forward as publicly as he did.
Yeah, and I think, I don't care if it's one voter that this happened to. I mean, it's illegal, right? And this is the problem. And the fact that even 1% of your 35,000, that should, that should scare everybody. That's even happening. So, I appreciate you getting the data. Thank you.
Senator Burley? Representative Barto, any questions?
Just real quickly, I was wondering, you mentioned Arizona has more anomalies than other states. Were we the only ones that had this kind of anomaly compared to other states with the unrequested absentees?
That actually was a universal problem to all six states, to some degree. But I don't think any had it quite to the same degree as you did. I'll just consult my chart, but that was my recollection, yeah. It was, it was more, far more substantial in Arizona. And you, we, looking at all these different states, they actually all have their own unique things that kind of make them stand out a little bit. And this is something that was unique to Arizona that made it sick. Because, you know, in other states, they have serious problems in areas where you didn't have problems. But this was a problem that seemed to be more prominent here than we found it elsewhere.
Would you think that's a feature of, you know, absentee balloting is very popular here in our state? I mean, we've had it for years and it's growing. And, you know, voter confidence in the, in the system had been growing until really there was more information about the vulnerabilities that have been coming to light and the questions about that. Do we compare, how do we compare with those other states?
Well, you're, I think you have a stronger history of absentee ballot voting here than the other states do. But I think what's important is that, like, I've got a phone center. I've got data analysts. I can request things from different commercial vendors in your state, Ossi, and go around and find out, who requested this ballot if this person didn't? How did that happen? I can't, it was done electronically. I can't track the IP addresses. I can't, I can't find the envelopes and, you know, that have arrived in and dusted for fingerprint. That's, that's something that's got to either be up to you guys or law enforcement in your state or some other law enforcement agency. But getting the question in terms of, who cast Naishan Garrett's ballot? How did that happen? Was it, was it clerical error maybe? Or signature verified? It wasn't just cast, it was signature verified. Something went wrong here. And it, I don't have the power to find that out. I can just present it to you guys and to others who have similar authority. But I'd really like to know the answer to that question. I don't think I'm alone.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mayor Giuliani, you had a couple of questions?
Yes, I do, sir. Just a few things that maybe, I don't quite understand, but might be very helpful. The governor and the secretary of state, I believe here today, certified the vote. It would, it would, it would seem to me that the one thing that you can be sure of, whether there are enough votes to overturn the election or not, or that the vote count is inaccurate, the one that presently exists. Is that right?
I believe that unless the questions that I raise get answered, you can't be confident of what the vote count actually is, and no one can.
But the present one is very questionable.
It is extremely questionable.
Not subject to a declaration under perjury that is true and correct.
I agree.
Would you sign, would you sign a declaration that it was true and correct in a statement to the federal government?
I absolutely would not. I would probably go, I would put myself at risk of going to prison.
And if I were your lawyer, I would tell you not to do it. Could you, based on your expertise, if in fact they hadn't been so hasty or the legislature were to take the responsibility, could you conduct an audit in which you could come to a reasonable degree of certainty on how many illegal aliens voted?
Could you ask that question? The federal government actually makes available a database of people, not necessarily who are citizens, but the opposite, people who are illegal aliens, are green card holders, et cetera. And I actually have the document that a state would use to request that, to have that check done. And it's my intent, subsequent to this, because we've got other things flying around, but to pressure every state in the country to make this request of the federal government. And that request has to come from the secretary of state's office. Now, what I don't know is, has the secretary of state of this state ever made that request to balance their voter list up against that to see who maybe is not qualified to cast a ballot? But that's an excellent question. That's, that's what I think they should do.
Want to make a bet?
I'm not a gambling man.
Betting outside of the casinos here is illegal, sir.
Let's go across to Nevada, and we can do that. But seriously, with the number of illegal aliens in Arizona, in the millions, it's almost beyond doubt that some voted. And the margin is so small, 10 million. Wouldn't you be duty-bound to conduct that study before you certified a winner in this election?
I would agree. And it's, so many things we can talk about that we shouldn't be happening at this hour. This is the kind of thing that the state should have done before Election Day, before a single ballot was cast. So, remove the risk of contamination. And what's just as dangerous, I think, is the suspicion of contamination.
Right. Well, there's one study that was done that said 236,000 illegal aliens voted. I have no idea what their methodology was or how they produced it. But if you had time to do it, could that be done with a degree of certainty with regard to the number, even if it were an estimate?
Well, to figure out the precise number is difficult, but to hold your voter list against what this federal government will provide and match, you'd be able to subtract a substantial number of the illegal immigrants. Or not just illegal immigrants casting ballots, but I think as, probably as prominent, which may increase your numbers, are people who are green card holders or other visas where they are here legally, but...
It's a bigger universe, non-citizens.
It's a, non-citizens who are permitted to vote. So, yeah, it's a much bigger universe. And I could certainly do that analysis, but I could not do it without the signature of the secretary of state on that letter to the federal government requesting access to that database. Because as you know, as many of these people know, it's very hard to figure out who actually is a citizen and who is not, or who is entitled to vote and who is not.
And how about the number of felons who voted that were not entitled to vote? That's been estimated at over 200,000 also. Would a, would an audit of the voting list be able to assist in determining an approximate number?
The mechanics, the technical mechanics of an audit are easy. Getting the data of all the felons who would be ineligible and not just complete data, not just that data, but you need to have full names, dates of birth at least, and then have the reciprocal data from the state, which they should have. And if they don't, that's a huge problem. Because we've accounted many cases where the state on their voter list, they've got like a blank or they'll mark somebody as the default, like born on January 1st, the year 1900 or something. So, to be able to conduct that analysis is easy, but to get the resources of the data behind it to conduct it may be challenging. But the state has a better capability of doing it than anyone else. And if you want to retain me to do that, I'd be happy to send you a new voice.
And how about people from out of the state voting?
That's an analysis we did run. But again, our number's on extremely low side because we, we need to have a high degree of confidence. The state itself could probably do a much better job of doing that analysis. And other states would be able to find more people who we couldn't discover having moved to other states based on real estate records, claiming the homestead tax exemption, which I think also established residency in another state. And just being able to do a much more vigorous match on voter lists. Because again, we, we only got what the state gave us. We don't have what the state itself has.
There was a poll that was published that said that non-citizens broke 80, 20 for Biden. How would someone do a poll like that?
You know, I would have to say with the sample sizes...
At least they made an attempt to find out who were the non-citizens. It seems like the governor and the secretary of state just don't want the facts.
I, I've actually worked for many pollsters. I actually used to work Frank Luntz. And I think figuring out how to do a poll of non-citizens in an election they shouldn't be able to vote in is, that's got a very high degree of difficulty. But Biden's doing really well with that group. I don't know why.
But I would, but that sounds like a pretty sensible breakdown.
Yeah.
So, just to sum up, in addition to all the hundreds of thousands of ballots where Republicans were not allowed to observe while the Democrats dealt with them secretly, there are also clear, the clear fact that non-citizens voted. The question is, how many? There's the clear fact that felons not entitled to vote voted. We just don't know how many. And that people from outside of Arizona voted. We just don't know how many. And in each case, the governor and the secretary of state put their names on the certification that the results were true and accurate and never bothered to make a single effort to find out about these obvious areas that would change the numbers.
You know, in a municipal election this same year, I was working for the candidate, and one of my responsibilities was as poll watcher. And... And when it came time to open up the absentee ballots, I was sitting in the room and I made sure I could hear and see everything. And in one case, a name came up and I had my list, and I raised my hand, I said, I object. That person doesn't live here, doesn't live in the city, shouldn't be able to vote here. They took his ballot out, they examined it, they had, we had a conversation about whether he should or not, and they actually, he, that, that vote was invalidated, it was spoiled.
You must have been in a state that follows the law.
I, I was, in fact, but if you do not have the ability to do that, it undermines the credibility of any election result.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brenner. I appreciate it.
Members on the panel, any other questions for Mr. Brenner? Representative Cook?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask you about the votes that you were talking about, that you could go in and you could find that stuff out, and I think we heard some misinformation, it wasn't 10 million, it's only 10,000 and some. And keep in mind, we don't need to find 10,000 votes, and I'm not saying we're, we're for one person or the reverse of the other, but 5,500 votes would change an election. So when you look at the numbers that you have presented just right here, right, and you call in question of, I won by 10,000 votes, let's say, well, 5,500 votes would change the election. And so it's very alarming when I see your information up here that, that, and the, and the voicemails that you've had, but thank you for your work.
To that point.
Representative Conso?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to that point, there wasn't just one election here in Arizona, there was many. And we lost one seat in the, in the Senate by a very slim margin. So I, I think it's important to remember that we're not just looking at this for one person's election, and, and Arizonans have a right to have representation on a clean, fair election. And your information's quite shocking. That would have changed the outcome of several elections here in this state, so I think an audit is, is warranted.
Mr. Brenner, I just, I've been trying to refrain from commenting, but I'm gonna tell you that you have just shone a light on something that confirms, I think, for all of us, that this is not an illusory issue. We, we have seen, this is hard, you know, somebody asked, where's the smoking gun and I want to see the blood splatter? There it is. All right? So thank you very much, sir. I appreciate your testimony. So our next witness is Dr. Shiva, and we're, we're gonna see what we can do to bring this in by way of Zoom. And I'm gonna turn over the screen to Dr. Shiva. Oops, no, don't want to share that. And I think you need to unmute yourself, Dr. Shiva.
Yes, I'm unmuted. What I do need is I need the ability to share.
The ability to share, you are getting way above my ability to run Zoom. Uh, let's see, screenshot, oh, wait a minute? Is there anybody here? Multiple participants can share simultaneously. That's probably it. How about now?
Great.
Please proceed, sir.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Dr. Shiva Iadure. One of my expertises is in the field called pattern recognition and mathematical analysis, so I'll try to keep it brief. But the objectives of this study were pretty focused to essentially perform an initial analysis on Maricopa County and to identify any anomalies and to provide an explanation for those anomalies. So that's what this, today's discussion is focused on. At a very high level, many people probably know these numbers. If you look at the, about 2.6 million people registered to vote in Maricopa County, in this election, 80.5% of them cast ballots, as you can see there. And this is not showing the data for, let's say, the independent or, or green parties, but 49.8% went to Biden and 47.6% to President Trump. So that was the reported results from the secretary of state. The other important thing to note is that, just to get it, one of the important features that you can look at in a election is a distribution of votes by party affiliation. So in this case, there was 35.3% of Republicans who voted, 31.3% of Democrats, 32.3% of independents, a small percentage of libertarians. That gives a total distribution, and we'll come back to this, why this is important in this analysis. So what I want to first begin by having people put their attention on this chart, what this is, is, is we're literally taking all the data provided by the secretary of state across the 743 precincts in Maricopa County, and we're literally recreating the election. And there are two curves here. One is the curve for President Trump, which is a red curve, and the blue curve is the curve for Mr. Biden. And as we move from left to right, what we're doing is we're starting with precincts which have low number of votes to precincts which have high number of votes, and we're literally counting the vote totals and summing them up together. When you get to the end here, you get the actual election results, so 49% for Mr. Biden and 47.6% for Mr. Trump. So these curves, in many ways, show the dynamic of the election as you move from the precincts from low vote counts to high, and you're essentially adding them up. So when you look at this curve in pattern recognition and pattern analysis, one of the things you try to understand is anomalies and the normal condition. So this is what we're calling the normal condition. In science, we call it the control. And we're literally looking at two important features. There's the shape of this curve, and there's the sequence in how this curve's developed. So in the analysis here, what we wanted to do was we wanted to re, see if we can reproduce the curve for President Trump and the curve for Mr. Biden by looking at the demographic of voters based on party affiliation, because that's one of the most, you know, easily accessible or one of the most prominent features in, in, in an election. So towards this, we initially did a, initial analysis of part, looking at voter turnout in a precinct, percent voter turnout. So every dot here represents a particular precinct, and you're looking at the percent voter turnout in a precinct along the Y-axis, and along the X-axis, simply the percent registered Republicans in a precinct. And what's interesting is you see a positive correlation, the more percentage of Republicans in a precinct, in fact, voter turnout is going up. Alternatively, when we looked at the percentage voter turnout in a precinct by percent registered Democrats in a precinct, you see a negative relationship. As the percentage of Democrats in a precinct increases, each blue dot is a precinct, you see a negative correlation with voter turnout. And similarly, we see the same behavior in the registered independents in a precinct. Voter turnout, and you see the negative correlation. So in summary, for Republicans, where the percent turnout positively correlates with percentage registered Republicans in a precinct, for Democrats and independents, the percent turnout negatively correlates with percent registered Democrats and percent registered independents increasing. So that's just giving you the feature of what was taking place in Maricopa County. Now, getting back to this, we have the capability, the computer affords us the opportunity to do what we call scenario testing. What are the potential scenarios of distribution of Republicans, Democrats, independents, libertarians, and Greens? That if you were to look at the, the potential infinite possibility spaces, we haven't done all of them, but in the time that we have, what are the percentages of distributions of voters that would give rise to produce President Trump's curve here? And what are the percentages that would give rise of those allocations of Republicans, Democrats, independents, Greens, and libertarians that give rise to Mr. Biden's percentage? And the reason we want to do this is to look at the plausibility of these results. Is it plausible that you could have some reasonable distribution of Democrats, Republicans, independents, Green to generate this very particular slope and these curves to get this net result? And remember, again, we're going from precincts from left to right, we're accumulating votes, so this is really 743 different data points. So we first, just to give you an idea, this is one of the potential scenarios, where we're looking at, in the case of Democrats, we're looking at a split of votes between Mr. Biden and Trump of 20% to 80%, of Republicans between 80% to 20%, and of the independents, 70, 30, libertarians, 0, 100, and Green, 100, 0s. This is one of the computer simulations. Like this, a computer can do far better than I could do sitting here. And what you see is, the green line is trying to match Mr. Biden's blue line, and you can see it's way off. And the purple line is trying to match the red line. So obviously, these aren't matching, because again, we wanted to see if we could overlay on those. So here's another potential scenario. In this case, we're looking at Biden-Trump voter distribution, Democrats by 20, Republican 20, 80, the independents 30, 60, libertarians 10, 90, 100, 0. And in this case, the blue line here, the, the purple line here is at least nearer the, the red line, and the green line is getting closer to Mr. Biden, Mr. Biden. So that, again, the green and the purple are the simulated versions. Then we do another example. Wow, this is getting a little bit closer. We see 100% Democrat, 0% Trump for, for Democrat distribution, relative to Republicans, 20, 80 split, 36%, 58% on the independents, and so on. But it's still not matching, even though it's getting close here, you notice the slopes aren't matching. Well, we try a different case, 100% Democrat, 0% Biden-Trump, Republicans 0, 100, and so on. Still doesn't match. This iteration process, again, the computer was done, and the only one that we were able to come close to matching was this. And I want everyone to look at this carefully. So out of all the, you know, potential universe which we've done, and we're gonna continue doing this, by no means is this done, we find that the interesting possibility we find here is when the Democrat percentage is 130% Mr. Biden and negative 30% Mr. Trump, and the Republican percentage is 0, 100, the independent is 30%, 58%, libertarian 0, 60, 60, 0. But what's extraordinary about this graph, again, you know, we went through many, many, many iterations, it matches perfectly, near perfectly. The slopes match, the curves match, the shape match. So what just tells us is that this demographic distribution of allocation of, of party, party affiliations is what can generate this. And I find it highly implausible, because this means that Mr. Biden got 130% of Democrat voters and negative 30%, and, and President Trump got negative 30%. So how is this possible? So how is this quote-unquote result possible? Well, one possibility could be there's a demographic within the independent voters, which is this group here, okay, this 38, 58%, not visible in our